Good evening. Tonight, this is the Farmington Hills Planning Commission Public Hearing Regular Meeting via teleconference, August 20, 2020, at 7:30 PM. City Farmington Hills offices are located at 31555 West 11 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48336. My name is Dale Countigan. I'm the Vice Chair, Steve Simpson. Our Chair is not available tonight. I have a few introductory comments before we kick off the meeting and initiate business of the Planning Commission tonight pursuant to Executive Order 2020-154 issued by the Governor. Participation in the Planning Commission meeting is made available via Zoom webinar teleconference out of precaution and to limit the potential exposure of the public and staff to the COVID-19 virus. Members of the public wishing to speak during the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda may do so by copying and pasting or typing in the Zoom webinar link found at the bottom, excuse me, at the top of tonight's agenda in their browser. Download, downloading Zoom client will be required or by calling in at 301-715-8592. The webinar ID number also located at the top of tonight's agenda for both those logging in into the meeting through the Zoom app or calling in is 837-12910785. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting has been open, members of the public who wish to speak should use the raise hand feature in the Zoom webinar, or if you dialed into the meeting, use asterisk nine on your phone to raise your hand. You will be acknowledged by the host using your name if available or, or the last four digits of your phone number. And will be permitted by the host to communicate directly with the Planning Commission and others about questions or comment. You also will be recorded as part of the meeting. You will be allowed to mute and unmute yourself only when permitted to do so by the host using the mute unmute feature in the Zoom app, or if you dialed in by using star six for both mute unmute. Members of public who wish to speak must begin their comments by identifying their name and the street they live on. If you would like to speak on these items other than those, those included in the public hearing section of the agenda, you will have an opportunity to do so when the public comment portion of the agenda has been open. Procedures for participation, public comment portion of the meeting are the same as those for participation in the public hearing. With that, I would call the meeting to order and I would ask the Secretary to take a roll call.
Hi, before I do that, I, we have two phone numbers on the attendees and I wondered if either one of those were Mr. Turner or Mr. Manti, or how we would find that out?
Mr. Turner.
I'm here.
And who's "I'm here"?
I heard something that sounded like Mr. Brickner or something.
No, I'm looking for Mr. Manti and Mr. Turner, and they sometimes will call in.
Mr. Turner is on.
Okay, Mr. Turner is on.
I've asked him to unmute.
All right. So I'm going to call roll now. Commissioner Brickner?
Here.
Manti? Not yet, I don't think. McRae?
Here.
Orr?
Here.
Schwartz?
Present.
Trafalgar?
Here.
Turner? So we know that Mr. Turner is here, but he should be able to speak and say here. All right.
I have Mr. Turner to unmute.
Hey, Carla, you're coming through really in a weird way.
Okay. All right, I'll switch rooms.
Yeah, it's garbled.
And while, while we're unmuting Mr. Turner, Mark, is there a city engineer here, a staff engineer present? Thank you. All right. I won't. So we'll call for Vice Chair Countigan.
Here.
And I don't know if we want to wait for Mr. Turner, we definitely can see him.
Mark, why don't we, as we try to figure out the technical problem, why don't we go ahead and move forward? We do have a quorum. Next item for consideration is approval of the agenda.
Move for the approval of the agenda as published.
Second. So moved by Barry. Who had, who had to support?
Orr.
Duke supported, all in favor, say aye.
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 We will call.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sir.
That's okay. All right, so Commissioner Brickner?
Yes.
Manti? I'm sorry, he's not here yet. McRae?
Yes.
Orr?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trafalgar?
Yes.
Turner? Not here yet. And Vice Chair Countigan?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, the first business item we have tonight is a public hearing item. So we'll kick off the public hearing. This is item 4A, PUD Plan 1, 2020, including site landscape plan, 56-6, 2020, location 29,011 Mile Road. The proposal is assisted senior living facility and SP5 special purpose district. Action requested tonight is to recommend to city council following the public hearing. Applicant is Edward Rose and Sons, Mark Perkowski, applicant, owner Sisters of Mercy's Regional Community. At this, at this point, I guess I'd ask for the proponent to come forward and present the proposal.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Mark Perkowski with Edward Rose and Sons, 38525 Woodward Avenue, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. I'm here tonight with John Thompson from PEA Group, our civil engineering consultant, landscape architect and surveyor, Zach Rose now from Pope Architects, our architectural design consultant, as well as Sister Mary Ellen Howard from the Sisters of Mercy. And we had a couple, I was going to stick to our slides today just to talk about things that were not submitted in the site plan so that we don't duplicate effort and, and show you things twice. You'll be seeing the site plans through the planning consultants review letters. But I just noticed Sister Mary Ellen Howard is showing up as an attendee, and I was going to ask her to speak to the first two slides, but as an attendee, I don't know if she would be able to chime in at this point. Sister Mary Ellen? Okay, well, let's see if she can chime in. If not, I can give you a quick overview. I'm obviously not as good as a nun, but I can give you a little bit of a background as to what's happened. If she's able to join us, I'll set aside.
Sounds good.
All right, so Edward Rosensons is under contract to purchase property from the Sisters of Mercy. Sisters of Mercy is a religious community of women with 62, 6,200 sisters worldwide. They administer the health care and education. They've had a long presence in the city of Farmington Hills, including on this property since the 1960s. They're instrumental in a lot of hospitals and health care initiatives in Michigan and across the nation. So brief history of the campus, in 1960, they purchased 160 acres. In 1984, they started moving retired sisters into the McCauley Center, which is one of the buildings on campus. In 1993, they sold the portion of the, what used to be the swimming pool that was for the nuns, they sold it to the city of Farmington Hills, and it's now the Caustic Center. As a result, these two properties are joined together.
Mark, this is Sister Mary Ellen. I, I finally got my audio working.
Perfect, very good. Let me let you take over. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark's covered it very well, but I just want to say, so that gives you a little background on the history of our involvement on the campus. But here we are in 2020, and we have decided to sell our property because we no longer need it. We have less than 40 sisters living on the campus, and we really can no longer manage or afford it. We are fewer in number, and our average age is 78 across our community. So I, I want to assure you that we are not leaving the area. Our sisters are moving to other facilities during the demolition and construction, but we hope to move back to the campus when the Rose facility is ready for occupancy. So thank you very much. I would be happy to answer your questions later.
Very good. Thank you, Sister Mary Ellen. So a little bit about Edward Rosensons. Edward Rosensons is a privately held real estate developer and management company based here in southeast Michigan. We're Michigan based, but we're across 15 states. Founded in 1921, so our 100th anniversary is coming up next year. We're very proud of that. We manage 65,000 apartments. We employ over 2,000 people. And we started in the senior living community business in the mid 2000s. So this would be in addition to several that we've had across several states. So we've got 42 years of multiple family ownership and experience. We self-finance, which means a lot to sellers and communities. We're not looking for investors or banks to, to underwrite us. We do it all ourselves. We're active in all phases of development from land acquisitions, site planning, construction and management. Through that, we're able to sustain a high quality standard throughout our property's lifecycle. We like to offer flexibility, products and services for diverse markets, and including for our senior living, we look to provide long-term care for people as they move in. We also draw long-term multi-generational investment strategy. We build and manage to increase our portfolio. We're not looking to sell, so as a result, we take pride in ownership. Just a few things to show some photos of things that don't show in the site plan, but this happens to be photos of our nearest community, the Rose Senior Living at Providence Park, which is on the campus of Providence Hospital in Novi, Michigan, 10 miles to the west. So just a few photos here, we provide the best quality in life for residents at competitive rates. And we like to provide a place where residents can age in place. As a result, we offer independent living, assisted living and memory care. We encourage people to stay active. We provide 24-hour assistance. So it's, it's, it's a community that obviously the city of Farmington Hills has seen before. We think we do a very good job and we're very proud of what we do. Level of care is tailored to the residents' needs as it's, as, as their needs change, our levels of care will change for each resident. And in this instance, we offer one to, one and two bedrooms for independent and assisted living and studios and one bedrooms for memory care typically. Our communities offer exercise rooms, cafes, dining rooms, movie theater, a library, lounges, activity, craft rooms, beauty salons. Then there's a little photo of our Rose Senior Living in Carmel, Indiana. Just to touch on Sister Mary Ellen's slide before, we tried to show the 160 acres as it used to be for the Sisters of Mercy. The parcel on the left that's shaded in yellow is now Mercy High School that's owned and operated by the Mercy High School. The center section in blue was put into a conservation easement through the Sisters of Mercy to preserve the wetlands and the wildlife habitat in that area. So that's under conservation easement with the Six Rivers Conservation Group out of Rochester. The orange or red section is the city of Farmington Hills Caustic Center that's owned and managed, operated by the Farmington Hills. And then the areas we're talking about today are the green. There's a green that's closest to 11 Mile. That is not part of the PUD because it's not going to be developed as a senior campus for our Rose Senior Living. The, the, the use of that will develop as the city decides what's appropriate for that, that section of the property through its zoning. The parcel in the back with the star on it is the parcel we're proposing to develop for senior living. So here's a quick, a quick overview of our proposed plan, the Caustic Center. The heavy black line around the periphery is the property line. The brown building would be a figure eight building that will show a little bit more in the, in Giffords Webster's review comments of our, our plan. We'll show the parking. We're going to preserve on the far left of the screen, if you can see, there's a building with a white roof. That's currently called Catherine's Place. We're going to preserve that building and, and convert it eventually to memory care. But our first objective is to build the new building shown in brown, which is our new figure eight assisted and independent living community. The green roof actually starts, we're on this screen real quickly. Let me show you the green roof down there is the large chapel. So that was a chapel constructed by the Sisters of Mercy. It's 10,000 square feet. I can't remember how many hundreds of people it seats. It's a large building. Right now, it's attached to the Caustic Center through a common hallway, and we're proposing to leave it that way. We have to talk to the city about that, but it may be available for use as a auditorium for the Caustic Center. I think some people in the city have expressed some interest in that. We just have to develop that plan further. It would still be on our property, but we make it available to the Caustic Center and we'll make some sort of a written agreement for that. And then the blue area is just a stormwater management pond, which would be for stormwater quality, anything off the run if it comes up from our site would, would be discharged to them and then discharged into the existing ponds that are in the conservation easement. Here's a quick rendering of our proposed elevation. Our architects have taken great effort to try to get this to blend with the existing architecture of the Caustic Center. Since we're nestled inside that campus, we'll be separately owned, but because we're part of the campus and part of the city's vision for a senior living community, a senior living activity center and residences, then we just figured we'd blend in as much as we can. Exterior materials and everything will be very complimentary to what's out of the Caustic Center now. Typical room sizes, that was a question asked during our last planning commission meeting. We did put some, some actual floor plans in our set of plans submitted, but just as a quick overview, our, our room sizes are going to be generous. As a matter of fact, I think the room sizes of our proposed building will be larger than the collection of room sizes for all the competitors. Will be larger than our room sizes that we're providing at Providence Park. And we did that purposely to differentiate ourselves. If somebody comes to look at a St. Rose Senior Living community and would like a smaller room, we have Providence Park, which is in Novi. If they're looking for a larger room or more opportunities for a two-bedroom or even a two-bedroom plus a den, Farmington Hills will be their, will probably be their best option. So, and then here, just the last couple of slides I wanted to throw, again, not something that was submitted with the site plan, but we had a drone take some photos at an elevation of 50 feet, which would be about the top of our building for the fourth floor for the independent side, just to show what's visible from there and then also kind of inversely what, what people from that vantage point might be able to see from us. So this is facing north at an elevation of 50 feet. The next one is, yeah, the next one is facing south, again, elevation of 50 feet. The building in the foreground is McCauley Center. That would be demolished for us to build our building. And then, of course, the green chapel roof in the back, thank you, Mark, that's, that will be preserved. So that's the existing large chapel. This would be facing west. The white roof building in this instance, closest to the camera is Catherine's Place, which we would be repurposing for memory care. And then the large peaked roof to the left, yeah, that's the, a small chapel that would also be preserved. It's a small chapel still operational, but we'd be preserving that for a common space for either our residents in our main building or for our new residents with memory care. I think our last view is facing east. There's a cell tower on our property that would stay. I had to, if I had to guess, that cell tower is probably over 100 feet tall. Again, we're at 50 feet, we're looking east, and it's hard to see the residents' houses in the back with, there's a lot of trees. We're going to preserve many of those as trees along the berm. The berm's going to stay. So we're trying to give you a perspective as to exactly what our elevation would be and what you want people to see. So that's kind of a quick overview. I figured it might be better to leave people asking for more and then wishing they never attended this meeting, so we tried to keep this brief. If anybody wants more information, please visit our website, rosesenioliving.com. You can click on Novi. Unfortunately, because of the COVID issue, we can't have visitors. We're limiting that right now. So I think the best option is to see things online. If somebody wanted to see, they, you know, we could certainly do a virtual tour for them. I think our leasing people are very accommodating, they'll try to do that. But just to give you a sense as to what we're all about, what we like to provide. So I think that's, that's about it for our presentation. If you'd like to sit back and we can field questions from our consultants or the rest of our team.
Thank you, Mr. Perkowski. We appreciate your presentation. Now I think the, we would like to hear from staff and our consultant from Giffords Webster.
Can we ask some questions of the proponent, please?
Why don't we wait till after, well, it's up to the board. If you want to, you want to do it now, or I was going to have off the opportunity after, after our consultant. It's up to you. Duke, if you want to do it now, that's fine.
Thank you. Can we go back to the picture facing north from 50 feet elevation, please? Alan, where is the freeway? Is that the gray middle on the right?
Yes, sir. It's, yeah, it's the, it's the concrete area right behind the trees.
So, so that, that grass then that we're looking at is on, on the property here?
Actually, yes. So you're looking at a berm, so closer than the cursor, so closer to this, there's a berm that kind of goes up. Our property's a little lower, and there's a berm that's built up, and then beyond that are the trees that are in there and the end of our way or in the conservation easement.
Thank you very much. That was, that was my question. Thank you very much, Alan.
Duke, no problem. Any more board member, number of questions? If not, we'll turn it over to staff and the consultant.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Rod Arroyo. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me.
Hi, Rod.
Hi. Good evening. I'm going to do a summary of our review letter, so I want to just start off by, I think you've got the zoning on your screen here if you're watching online. And you can see that this property is zoned SP5. And you can see the surrounding zoning around the, the subject property. See, once you go to the net, we'll just go through these slides real quick and then I'll go through the letter. This is the PUD boundary. As has been indicated, the, the applicants developing roughly 15 and a half acres of the total parcel size for this development. So the parcel, the site itself is, is about 54 acres, 34 acres is in that conservation easement, and 19 acres is remaining, but about four of that is the frontage piece on 11 Mile. So they're actually developing as part of this PUD proposal about 15 and a half acres, and that's what you see in, in the red outline. Go to the next slide. And then this is a survey of existing conditions. And then this is the PUD site plan. So we'll be talking about that as we go through the review. So as I move on now, I want to point out that the, you've heard a pretty good introduction from the applicant. They're indicating that a number of, of buildings are going to be removed. In fact, six obsolete structures are going to be removed as part of this. And then, of course, the preservation of Catherine's Place and the, I believe it's about a 500-seat chapel that is, that is on the site. So we look at surrounding and adjacent properties. I-696 is, is to the north. To the east, you have RA2 zoning, the Farm Meadows subdivision, single-family homes. To the south, SP5, and to the west, SP5 and, and RA2. And this site is accessible from 11 Mile Road through, via easement across city property. The Caustic Center is in fact owned by the city of Farmington Hills, and then the vacant property in front of the Caustic Center is also owned by the city of Farmington Hills. In terms of the PUD qualification, the Planning Commission has already granted preliminary qualification. This was back at the April 16, 2020 meeting. What is before you this evening is a final determination of qualification. This final determination takes place through a two-step process for the benefit of those who aren't familiar with how this works. The Planning Commission holds a public hearing, and then they will make a determination that is then forwarded to city council, who has the final say on approval of the PUD. If in fact the city council approves the planned unit development, then a PUD agreement will then go back to city council, which will outline in writing all of the particular terms and, and all the various commitments that the applicant is making, as well as any commitments the city is making in terms of this particular approval. So as we look at the criteria for final determination qualification as a PUD, there are a number of different items that are listed within your zoning ordinance, and you have to generally need at least one of these. But when the Planning Commission previously reviewed these from a preliminary perspective, there were, there were, there were several that, that stood out. And then in terms of the planned unit development under number E in our letter, at a minimum, one of these needs to be made, met, and there were four that the Planning Commission found were appropriate to consider for this application to permanently establish land use patterns which are compatible or which will protect existing or planned uses, to promote the goals and objectives of the master plan for land use, to foster the aesthetic appearance of the city through quality building, design and site development, provision of trees or landscaping beyond minimum requirements, preservation of unique or historic sites or structures, and/or the provision of open space or other desirable features of the site beyond minimum requirements. And then finally, to bring about redevelopment of sites where an orderly change of use is determined to be desirable. These, these, the structures that are on the site, I think you could make a case that these, many of these are obsolete, the ones that are particularly the ones that are proposed to be demolished as part of this. The, I think the Sisters of Mercy have indicated that this is some, these, there's challenges associated with trying to repurpose this building, and hence this proposal coming forward seeks to preserve important buildings that are being preserved, but then demolishing the obsolete buildings and then building new structure to, to, to house the proposed senior housing development that you have before you. In terms of the site plan and the use, some of the details, the applicant is proposing 207 apartment. There'd be assisted and independent living. And then in the future, it is anticipated that the Catherine's Place will become a 27 apartment memory care facility. The master plan for land use has a quasi-public designation to the site, is also a specific study area, and it talks about that. I won't go into all of that in detail. I know we've, we've covered it one previously, but this is a, this is an area that clearly has a community. This is a, this is an area that clearly has a community center focused with the caustic center. And the SP five zoning, which is the current zoning, does allow for senior housing. So it it is in line with many of the goals and objectives, as well as The the potential uses that would be permitted under the SP five zoning. In terms of dimensional standards, we go through the requirements and show what is actually proposed. One of the key issues here is building height. As part of the planned unit development, you can request for Relief or variation of some of the requirements through the process. There's a maximum height By right in the district of thirty feet. They're proposing a three story and a four story building. The three story building is forty one feet, seven inches, and the four story building, which would be the greatest distance from the Single family development to the east. It's basically at the west end of this development area. That would be fifty four feet for the four story area. So that does require relief as part of the PUD application or approval process. In terms of building materials, you you did get to see a little bit of that from the applicant. They're proposing brick veneer cyber cement fiber siding in two different colors. We believe that these products are durable products, which is What your ordinance encourages. So that's something for for consideration. In terms of parking, This is another area where the applicant is looking to provide some flexibility. If you look at your ordinance, the way it reads, there would be Two hundred and seventy three spaces would be required for the new building and then additional for the memory care. The plan proposes two hundred and nineteen parking spaces. What your ordinance allows is the potential subject to planning commission approval For the land banking of a certain number of spaces. That means you basically set aside an area Where those spaces could be constructed if they're needed, but they're not constructed unless there is a demonstrated need for them at some point in the future. So they are proposing a land banked area. It's shown on the plan. Just as a matter of information for you, the Parking area on the east side that is to be constructed Is roughly three hundred feet from the east property line next to Farm Meadows subdivision. If they do have to build The land bank parking, which is is I think highly unlikely, but in the event that that Were to be constructed in the future, that's roughly a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy five feet From the eastern property line. So there's still a fairly substantial Distance from the east property line where there are single family to where this parking would be. In addition, the applicant is adding landscaping, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So the way land banking works is in the event that This parking is needed, it's actually the planning commission that makes the determination. So if based on Information you receive or observations you make, You see that there's problems with parking, where there's not enough parking, there's overflow. You can require the applicant to come before you. And at that time, a plan would be a more refined plan for that land banked area would be presented. Appropriate screening would be evaluated and you could require additional Planting of of shrubbery, trees, whatever the case may be In order to accomplish what the zoning ordinance provides for. And that would be done. And then once that determination is made, the applicant would have a hundred and eighty days to construct Those additional spaces in the event that that they're determined to be necessary. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of the landscaping when I get further down in the letter. In terms of signage, They are showing some signage. In addition, they're showing some wayfinding signs that are On city property. So that will require approval of city council through the PUD process. They're really intended to help folks who are along eleven mile or within the site be able to navigate and get to this property. We believe that the signs that are on the eastern driveway that That that's kind of a straight shot, as you can see from the plan coming up from eleven mile, that takes you right into their to their main entrance. We believe that consideration of those signs is is definitely appropriate In order for folks to be able to find this facility, given that it doesn't have frontage directly on eleven mile. The ones on the western entry into the caustic center, We believe and you know, Mr. Stack is showing those. We below believe that those may not necessarily be appropriate for this development In that this frontage piece that's now vacant will ultimately Likely the city is looking to 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 pursue some potential detached housing in that area. There's a number of possibilities For what could happen there. No final determination has been made, But it is likely that that frontage property will develop at some point in the future. And we believe that the signage at that westerly entrance would probably be most appropriate To share between caustic center and whatever that development is along along eleven mile. So but the ones, the signs that are proposed on the east side, We believe would would certainly be appropriate in order to assist People, visitors and 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 family members to 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 find this facility Due to its lack of frontage on eleven mile. But ultimately, it's the city council's decision in terms of whether or not they're going to accept Those plans, the signed plan that's been proposed. They did provide lighting, a photometric plan was provided. It meets the standards and the ordinance. And a pedestrian connection is shown to eleven mile, which is also a requirement and they have met that requirement. Now, in section thirty four, four point two oh point three, there are Centers for elderly care and services in the SP five district. There's a series of standards that apply to them going through the PUD process. For example, traffic impact study is is required. They have submitted that engineering is is evaluating that. One item that is another relief item that the applicant is requesting Is a floor area ratio relaxation. There's a maximum floor area ratio of point one six For the entire zoning lot based on the standards in SP five. They're proposing a floor area ratio of point four five.
Excuse me, please. For a ratio is between two things. What are the two things that the floor A ratio is between?
That's what I was, that's what I was about to describe. So the floor area is the total floor area of the building. Okay, so all the the total square footage of all the 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 floor area within that building. And then that is divided, but basically it's a ratio of that to the land area that they are developing. Okay, so it's the total area of the building and that ratio to the land area. So if In in this particular instance, you would take that floor area of the building and divide it by the land area. That would get you the floor area ratio. So in this particular instance, it it the SP five Was originally envisioned, I believe, as being a very large parcel that would have Open space areas as well as development areas. And what you have with this is a unique property. Some of the open space areas are actually shared with the caustic center, Shared with the conservation easement and the like. So they're they're not necessarily on this property And and everything that's part of it. So you end up with a, what I would almost consider to be an art What appears to be an artificially high floor area ratio, because you're not taking into consideration Other properties that are essentially open space. So they're asking for Relief of that point one six four area ratio and they're asking for the approval of point four five. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of, there there's a, there's a calculation that deals with Corner to the side rate relationships with buildings that we would just like to see some additional clarification on. I did not see that in the in the documentation that was provided. So we just, that's just a minor item. We'd like to see that information. Another thing, though, that the SP five district does is in this, if you're a senior housing development, Potentially, you can go from that thirty foot maximum up to forty feet. Remember, I mentioned the maximum light in the district Was thirty feet, but with senior housing, you can actually go up to forty feet. So the relief they're asking for, really, when you think about it, it's it's it should be based in comparison with the forty feet. So the one building is going to be just over forty one feet. The other is going to be fifty four feet. And if you were doing a a standard SP five senior housing project, you could get Forty feet through through this process According to the way the ordinance reads. And through the PUD process, they're asking for some relief For that standard to provide for a four story building and a three story building. There's also a requirement for a five foot berm between the parking lot and the property line, unless existing vegetation could be preserved. Many of you are probably aware, there's a fair, very substantial berm As well as existing vegetation and trees along the east property line adjacent to the Farm of the subdivision. That is fairly continuous with the exception of a, there's one break area there where a drive goes through to get back to the To the wireless tower. And but then there's also lots of vegetation and they're adding additional plantings. So they're they're asking, they're requesting that you accept the existing vegetation plus the 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 landscaping that they are proposing as meeting the intent of of that berm. And we believe that You know, most of that area are, like I said, already has that berm. The additional Vegetation in addition to the existing vegetation is going to be substantial in terms of buffering This use from the adjacent property. In terms of tree preservation, We've provided you with the information about trees that are going to be removed. There are twenty one landmark trees that are proposed to be removed. And there's, there are ninety regulated trees that are also proposed to be removed, and they are providing all the required replacements. A hundred and nineteen total replacement trees are required and they are providing that on on the site in accordance with the ordinance. We are still looking, though, for a sheet with superimposing the tree survey, Including the trees to be removed on an aerial photograph. They did provide A a overlay showing the landscaping plan and the trees to be removed. But just as a, as a completing the the package here, we need to see that over an over an aerial. We'd like to just have that To this moving forward to to city council. And then parking lot trees, Thirty seven trees are required. They are meeting that. They're providing all the parking lot trees that are in fact required. Now, one of the things we note, though, is that some of the parking Trees, the parking lot trees, and you can see on this particular map, the ones at the very east end of the Of the parking area, the trees are actually proposed in the land banked area. So where Mr. Stack is pointing to there, those trees are being proposed, but they're actually in the land banked area. So If that land bank parking area had to be constructed, those trees would have to be removed if they were constructed as proposed. We think there's a fairly simple solution to this. That's just to create a island Right in that area where those trees are and then just ship the parking spaces that would be in the land baked area over A few feet. And then that can function as it's proposed. And then that island would preserve those, the majority of those trees in the in the location that they are shown. And they would not have to be removed in the future if the land bank parking went in. So We'd like to see that modification made with the administrative review. So we can be sure that those trees remain permanently as as part of this development. So in summary, the applicant is asking for, as I mentioned, they're they're required to Specify what they're asking for in terms of relief for ordinance standards. And I mentioned the building height. And then I also mentioned the floor area ratio. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear to the planning commission. That is a summary of what I intended to cover, and I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Rod, thank you as always for your thorough reviews. Before we get into the Public hearing, I'd like to open up to commissioner questions Of either the proponent or the consultant. Are there questions?
Yes. Or here. Is it possible for us not to make a determination on on the signs at all? I just leave that to city council?
I I believe so. That's that's something that's in there. And if you want to, you could even make it, your 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 motion can say that you're not Offering a specific recommendation on the signs.
Thank you. Secondly, on your comments on about the land bank parking, what's matter with moving the trees Further away so that you can put the parking in in that space later?
Certainly, one option would be to put them all the way at the opt, the far east end where the land big parking border would be. But my concern is that we don't really know how much of that land bank parking is going to be constructed. We don't know What type of supplemental vegetation might go in at that time. I it seems to me it makes sense to just put a a curb dialing At that location where they're proposing it and have that provide for Provide for the the landscaping that 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 is required. And And in the, the other thing that they're going to have parking lot landscaping as well in that land banked area. So Where you see those end islands, there will be trees required there. And if they have to Add that land bank parking, you can acquire additional trees on the far east side Of of that land banked area. So it really, I I think by putting it where where it's shown on the site plan, You actually would would likely have a greater layer of buffering if they ended up having to put in That land bank parking later, because then there would be more trees east of that in addition to those that are right next to the East boundary of the parking that's being built.
So would the landscaping come back to us or would that be done administratively?
If they request for the land bank parking, or you determine, rather, if you determine the land bank parking is necessary, That would be part of what they bring back to you as a landscape plan And a proposal for that. And you would review that. You could make sure you believe it's it's And meets the objectives of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. Commission, do we have any other questions?
They all have a question.
Commissioner Turner, this is Commissioner Turner.
Oh, good. Good to have you, Bob. Go ahead.
I've been, I've been here from the beginning. I have a question. Are we voting to send this to the council? Or is there going to be a public hearing first?
There will be a public hearing following the Q and A we're doing right now. We're gonna have a public hearing and then we're gonna make a recommendation to city council tonight.
Okay.
So I have, I've not, I've not opened the public hearing yet. Once questions from the commission have concluded, we'll open the public hearing, okay?
Okay, my concerns are of the number of relief that the applicant is requesting. And we haven't gone into some of the requirements that the engineer staff has pointed out. That's my concerns.
Okay, and as, I mean, as we delve into the the development and look at what they're proposing and Look at the trade offs in terms of the ordinance and PUD, we'll have to make a determination whether we think Those exceptions are are something we want to go with or recommend or something we can't live with. So Appreciate your 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 comments and your concerns. Any more questions from the commission?
Neil?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Steve. I think we should, so that we have a clear record. The thing that stands out the most is the biggest deviation Is the height. And I think the applicant Should tell us. Okay, so the four stories, you're over one foot. The five stories, you're over fourteen feet. So the, my question is, Is this development economically feasible? If you either kept it all at four stories or some, do you, why do you need the fifty four feet? I think we need that record because To me, that's the biggest deviation from, you know, the youth, you're really not changing the nature of what's there. You're going from senior housing to senior housing, just that it's From religious to secular. But if you can explain the rationale For the the fifth floor and the additional height that that
Mr. Mr. Schwartz, I think that's a good question. Mr. Pro, Prokoski, can you address that for the commission, please?
Yeah, just for clarification, we're we're proposing three stories on the eastern portion and then four stories on the western part of our building. So the four stories would be the one that goes to fifty four feet. Three stories would be forty one feet. In terms of economic feasibility, yes, we do need the density, the cost of the land, the redevelopment, taking down the buildings, all that comes into play. And we did think about, you know, trying to keep this all three stories under forty feet, but in doing so, we But in doing so, we would be encroaching more closer to the east property line where the where the single-family residents are. So we chose to try to consolidate and tuck as much behind the caustic center as possible and be less um uh, less visible and uh and include and farther from the residential, from the single-family residential.
Okay, thank you. I think that that's important that the, when the council looks at this, they they have that fact, so.
Yeah, good point, Steve. Thank you very much. Uh, any more questions from the commission or either our consultant or the proponent?
Yes, uh, I have one more additional question, Orr here.
Mr. Orr.
Um, at one point, um, Mr. Turner brought up the engineer's report and I was thinking about the fire department. Have you solved your issue with the fire department or is there gonna be an additional road to the eleven mile needed?
Um, the road to eleven mile, I I think we satisfied that by having uh multiple accesses through the east side of the caustic center through parking lots. We didn't meet with the fire department. The road down west of the part, the caustic center was not feasible because it goes through conservation easement areas and wetland areas. So they were satisfied with the uh, the curb cut, actually John Thompson, our engineer from P E A's on, he might be able to better explain that.
You're done. Thank you very much.
We start with questions, commission?
Here kind of again, we have Chris McCray would like to speak.
Oh, good. Chris, go ahead. Thank you. Chris, are you there?
I am here, yes. So um, I'm having a little trouble with the drawings. Can can the proponent confirm the distance to the east from the building itself? You indicated that you were concerned about coming too close to that direction. From the building itself to the east property line, that dimension there from the east. I I can't read that. What does that say?
Guy, did you read that to us, John Thompson? I I um, I believe it was over four hundred feet, but I can't read it myself.
I believe it's four hundred and over four hundred and eighty feet is what I'm measuring.
Okay, so one and a half football fields. Yeah, I, to your point that, you know, you went up instead of across, um, you know, I mean, fourteen-foot deviation on the on the height seems to be, you know, as a percentage, it's it's extremely high. But at least it's all on the west side of the building. The uh, the cons- you know, do have concerns for the for the circulation, but it sounds like that's been sort of with engineering, so defer to that. Is I presuming that since this is a, you know, the type of building it is, the the ground floor is all of the same elevation, right? It's because the ground actually slopes toward the, down toward the residential on the east.
Yes, so our 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 main floor is all one elevation, correct?
Okay, might have more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any other commissioners with questions?
Uh, Dale, this is Steve again. So on on the question of parking, um, the people that are gonna be in the memory care are not gonna be driving and they're gonna be lucky if they get one visitor a day. And, you know, the other seniors living there, I guess, are not gonna have two cars and not a lot of people visiting them, um, other than my children who'll come visit me two, three times a day. So the parking doesn't bother me, the land bank makes sense. I can't recall where we've land banked another property and added, and maybe we've we've done it maybe on office if it expanded, but it would seem to make the most sense on the trees that uh, put them in an aisle, an island as uh Rod suggested. And then they don't have to rip out viable trees and replace them with smaller trees if they need to expand. I I'm fine with that being handled on administrative basis. On the sign, it seems to me that we don't punt on the sign. We say that the, as part of the P U D agreement, the city and uh enrolls coordinate their sign. So you don't have two signs and people need to know where these properties are are set so so far back, so if you've never been there. Um, I think signs on the western entrance for both caustic and uh the senior facility would be useful. But I don't see why they can't have a a joint sign that, you know, the same material and lettering and it would look better. Why that can't be done in, in a, as part of the uh P U D agreement.
Dale, I have, I have one more comment. So can the proponent, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Um, reiterate the part about the the exterior of the building. I I was a little surprised. Did you actually say you're gonna match what a sixties era building looks like? I don't think I've ever actually had somebody say that. That's not the case, trust me.
No, actually, so we, we did take the flat roof and we took some common themes, obviously the brick and some of the coloring. But no, it will be a modern building, um, obviously with our architecture. But we did, we did try to match the theme of the flat roof and and uh kind of the elevations like that. Maybe Zach Rosen now is our architect, he's on, if he can expand a little bit further.
Yeah, this is uh Zach Rosen with Pope Architects. Um, we, we wanted to sort of acknowledge the existing buildings on the site and and have our building uh, the material palette complement that. Um, so we didn't want to clash in any way. We wanted to make sure that this felt like a, like a whole campus. So we used the brick and some of the fiber cement, uh, but, you know, the the white with the darker windows is a more modern look. We have some of the wood look materials, um, that's a very modern material, some larger uh glass that the residents should really uh, really like and they really help pop the elevations too. So uh, yes, we just wanted, we wanted the whole campus to feel cohesive, but no, certainly. Our intent was not to match uh the nineteen sixties uh here.
I would challenge, the city needs to punch up, not the other way around. That's for another argument for another day. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Uh, any other questions?
Yes, please. Orr again.
Mr. Orr.
Uh, I waited so long, oh, no, I waited so long, I forgot about it. I'm sorry. Oh, I know what it was. If I may?
I paused long enough.
Uh, thank you. Um, typically when we have these uh P U Ds, we are uh supplied building materials. Uh, I would like uh somebody other than the administration to look at building materials. Is it possible for you to supply materials uh to city hall? So that the uh city council can look at them at their leisure. We're not gonna get another chance if we approve you tonight. So I I I think that building materials are are important enough to look at, uh, at least to know what's there. And this is the first time that we've done this virtually. And uh, in all the years I've been on this commission, we've never not had materials on a P U D. So uh, is is that something that the uh, that it would be okay in the motion uh, from the rest of the commission to ask them to supply materials uh to city hall?
Uh, certainly that would be appropriate when at the time somebody wants to make a motion, we'll we'll note that. And uh, as we talk about elevations and stuff like that, we'll uh revisit that, Mr. Orr.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I I have a question.
Mr. Brechner.
They, they're uh, oh, up Orchard Lake Road, they're uh building a senior facility behind the uh, the Panera, there's where the car auto dealerships are. Is that, would that be equivalent to a four-story building? So we can get an idea of what it actually, the actual height. Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
They're in West Bloomfield at that point.
I know they're in West Bloomfield. That's not the, that wasn't the question. Is that a, oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, thanks, Chris. Is that a four-story building? So we get an idea of how tall it actually is? If you know. Does anybody know?
Any takers? I don't know, uh, Barry, if we have anybody who has that information at this point tonight.
Mark, no? No, I was just trying to get something that might be uh equivalent that people could think about in their minds. Because I know how tall that thing is, but I don't know if it's three or four stories, that's the point. And I assume it's gonna be made of, it's gonna be built quite similarly to that particular facility. It's not gonna be a big metal and uh and in cement thing, it's gonna be built floor by floor. Is that correct? It's not gonna have a metal superstructure, it'll be more wood.
Yeah, our building would be wood, correct?
Maybe a better, maybe a better uh reference point would be one of the hotels along twelve mile at Farmington Road. Maybe we know those numbers more. Those are four-story buildings, the newest one is.
That they were taller.
Could be five.
I was just trying to see if people could relate to something that we actually can look at now as to what it might be. I I do know it's going to be uh mostly hidden by the caustic center and it does sit far back from eleven mile road. But it's obviously taller than the ca- caustic center, so it'll be sticking up a little bit.
What's the uh, what's the height of the uh corner of the hotel, corner of uh, was that Halsted and Hillstead? That four-story?
Candlewood Suites, that actually had a a variance to get to the four stories.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is Rod Royal, the um, the the westernmost of the three hotels on six ninety-six, right near Farmington Road. That is four stories.
That's what I thought.
All right, thank you, Rod.
Thanks, Rod. And I I I also, you know, we gotta uh evaluate and, you know, how it's placed within the development and surrounding structures and so its appearance may be a little bit different. Standalone uh building, just just viewing the height. Uh, any other questions on the board? Okay, so uh, let's co- uh kick off the public hearing tonight on uh this P U D plan. Uh, while people dial in or link in, uh, staff shared with me tonight. And I think uh, Mark Stack, you have a copy of a letter from William Coleman of West Sky Drive who had specific questions uh regarding um particular uh drawings. Uh, is that something that staff could uh kind of could highlight for us?
No, it's, no, that's the building. The the parking lot's about three hundred feet. The one, the parking lot that's gonna get constructed is three hundred feet. I will, I will be happy to help out.
Thank you, Rod.
Um, so what is the decision process? I think I did actually go through that in detail. The planning commission makes the decision on the land bank parking um, and determines the screening that's appropriate. And so the planning commission is the, actually the, as the way the ordinance reads, you're the sole determinant of the land bank parking and when it gets constructed. Um, defining the easterly access drive to be realigned by the city. Um, the, because the easterly access is crossing city property, um, that's something that's being worked out with in final engineering in terms of exactly how that's gonna get modified. But I can tell you that the um realignment i- i- to ma- because I know there's, there's areas where the the existing drive does not actually match up with the easement and some of that has to be cleaned up. But the intent is to stay out of the berm area, that berm that currently exists along the eastern boundary. Um, there is no plan and no uh intent to impact that, so that will um remain in place um, when that roadway is is reconstructed. Because it is an older roadway that comes in on the eastern side and serves the caustic, so that will likely be um reconstructed. But that, those details will all be worked out in final engineering, but they will not um go into that uh, the berm area and and impact the height of that berm. Um, we're, let's see, sheet flows offsite, um, that's really an engineering question, um, as well as the other one. Um, I'm not gonna try to answer the engineering questions, but uh, I will answer it it to the extent that this project, if approved by city council at the P U D level, um, will have to go through final engineering. And as part of that, they are going to have to meet the engineering standards that the city has. So um, they will have to um meet whatever those standards are. So I guess my, and if they, anybody else wants to chime in on that from the applicant's side, um, when I'm done with this, that might be another option to hear from the applicant's engineer. Let's see, is the trash enclosure across the north end um of the three-story town center? I'm not, I don't know if I quite understand what that question is. Um, so I'll.
He's asking, is that the location? Maybe not clear on the plans.
Yeah, so let's get clarification on the trash enclosure.
We have clarification on that.
Yeah, man, one can speak to that as well.
Okay, confirm that the tree line along the east side of the property remains intact. Yes, um, it will remain intact. To my knowledge, there's no modifications to that uh tree line um, adjacent to Farm Meadow subdivision.
Okay, very good. There's a bell. Okay, thank you, Mark. Rod, where are we at now?
Um, now we're on the um, is i- is that a fence line just to the west of the tree line? If so, what is the height? Um, I'm not exactly sure what that's, um, that's on drawing T one. I'm not exactly sure what that I I. Okay, okay. Okay.
Only during construction.
Right, so that's to protect the the, right, the root area of the trees.
Emperor, very good, okay.
Confirm that all the lights are pointing towards Rose Senior Living Complex. Um, yes, the ordinance requires full cutoff fixtures, um, so that that light trespass does not go towards residential areas. Uh, they've shown that they're meeting that uh in the lighting plan. And if there's an issue with that, that would be something that would have to be corrected if it gets installed incorrectly. Uh, because full cutoff fixtures are are in fact required, including a houseside shield that's now in your ordinance, so that it provides additional protection from light trespassing onto residential areas. Um, and then what is the box to the east of the parking lot? Drawing A one dash one, I'm not sure of that one.
Maybe when the uh proponent comes up to a question, maybe they can address that one, that they can look at their plans.
Um, then general questions, confirm that the existing terrain will not be altered. I think I answered that regarding along the eastern property, that that berm, those the berm areas and the trees that are there will remain. Um, and then why is the building height not limited to two stories? Uh, I think the um applicant provided a response to that as well.
Okay, uh, thank you, Rod and Mr. Coleman, or if you're listening in. I hope that that was helpful in terms of what you uh asked about, asked uh us to look into. And certainly as we uh review this plan, uh, there'll be further refinements. To the proponent, do you have, you have any response on the engineering uh question, Mr. Coleman? And on the issue of the the box to the east of the parking lot?
Actually, uh, this is about Bukowski, John Thompson from P E A. John, could you um better?
Actually, uh, this is about for Kaski, John Thompson from PEA. John, could you, um, better describe the sheet flow to the offsite residential and the box, please?
Sure. Good evening, John Thompson with PEA. Um, the, um, we do have a drainage plan in the plan set that you could, uh, look at if you'd like. Um, but there's, uh, the area along the top of the berm, uh, in the northeast corner of the property flows towards the subdivision currently. Um, there are no improvements in that area and there will be no additional flow going towards subdivision. With regards to the box on A1.1, uh, that's the location of the wayfinding sign, I think, if he's referring to that or the landbag parking. I'm not sure which.
Yeah. Looks like the, an old boundary for, for, um, for the general, a gen- kind of a generalized representation of the land bank parking area, which is more detailed on another sheet.
That is correct.
Very good. Uh, good. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, for the thorough response to Mr. Coleman's, uh, letter. Uh, since we've been reviewing Mr. Coleman's letter, has there been any calls, links, and, or, uh, questions from the general public regarding this PUD?
Chair Conigan, I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, uh, commission, uh, any further questions? Any questions that you want, want to ask at the, at this, at the public hearing to further illuminate the, uh, proposal? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Uh, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. War.
Can I make a motion, please?
Absolutely.
Uh, I need a little advice. Uh, typically on these motions, we have to cite the reasons we're giving this approval, or do we have to cite them in this motion? Or is that been, was that the last motion we did that?
Mr. Schultz, do you have, uh, an opinion on that, on the question?
Um, so Duke, when, if you see that, uh, that line in the sample motion sheet here where it says consistent with the goals and objectives and applicable provisions?
Okay.
I think, yes, I think it'd be a good idea to, uh.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If you, if you have handy access to them, yes.
I, I, I will proceed. I move that we, we recommend the city council, the PUD Plan One of two thousand twenty, including site plan and landscaping plans fifty-six dash six dash twenty twenty, dated July twenty ninth of two thousand twenty, submitted by Mark Varoski from Edward Rose and Sons be approved because the plans are in accordance with the objectives, goals and policies of the master plan and future land use and is consistent with the objectives and applicable provisions of the planned unit development option as outlined in section thirty-four three of chapter thirty-four of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the commission finds that, uh, the, um, applicant, um, complies with, uh, section thirty, um, section thirty-four, three, twenty, sub- uh, subsection E. Uh, they comply with number two, six, seven and eight. And therefore we are approving this, uh, compared to the, uh, zoning ordinance. Um, we are, uh, subject to modifications of the zoning chapter requirement, um, that the, uh, applicant, um, landbag approved, uh, parking is approved. The height, uh, of the maximum, uh, fifty-four and a half feet. I don't think two inches is going to make a difference. Uh, there, there's, uh, an access easement, uh, approved. That the land to floor area ratio of four point, uh, point four or five is acceptable. Uh, that the, uh, the signs as submitted on the, uh, uh, plan are acceptable to the planning commission, but must be approved by city council. That when you would like to get building, uh, materials submitted to, uh, city hall for, for approval by the city council before their, their meeting. Um, the road repairs to the existing, uh, access road be approved by the engineering department and paid for by Edward Rose and Sons. That, uh, the deficiencies listed in Giffords Webster's letter of April, uh, August tenth, uh, be complied with. Uh, that no berm is required on the east side. And, um, the tree preservation requirements listed in Giffords, uh, specifically must be complied with. And, uh, that the administration be allowed to redesign landbag parking to comply with the, uh, complaints of, uh, Giffords in their letter of August tenth.
Okay. Do we have, uh, support for the motion before we have discussion?
Commissioner Turner, I'd like to add amendment to the motion.
I would second the motion first, then you can have the amendment.
Do we have a second? Does McRae?
I second the motion.
Okay, uh, Bob, thank you for, uh, 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 supporting the motion. What is your amendment, Bob?
Uh, the amendment, uh, that the applicant complies to all of the city engineer's requirements.
As always, Bob, that's going to be done by the engineer anyway, but I'll do that. That's good.
Duke, you okay with that? Okay.
I am.
Yep. Okay, uh, folks, any other discussion on the motion with amendment?
We should just clarify that the motion is recommending to council to approve. We're not actually approving this.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. It is, uh, as published, this is a recommendation to city council. City council ultimately make the, uh, say, uh, yea or nay on the development.
I, I have a question. Are we going to mention the signs or, or as Steve said, punt?
I did.
You did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I said not punt.
Well, not punt. I'm sorry, Steve.
And we, and I didn't.
Go for it on fourth now. Mr., Mr. War, uh, your comment, uh, your motion includes, uh, uh, accepting the, uh, existing vegetations, correct?
Uh, a- a- as the berm? Yeah, um, yeah, I, I, I said no berm required, but yes, I, I, it, um, and again, uh, vegetation, the east is sufficient.
Okay. Thank you. Cheryl, do you have all that?
I think I do.
Okay.
I can do it, or if you want to do it, Mark, either one.
Yes. Road repair, uh, of the main access, but approved by engineered and paid for by Rose. I, 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 I did not look at the road when I was out there. I, I, but I'm assuming that most of the damage was up on the other side of caustic center. Is that correct? I, 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 I don't know. That's why I'm saying, um, but I know that Edward Rose is going to move in there with all her heavy equipment anyway. So she was, that road probably won't last much. Right. But there was also a mention in, in, uh, the engineering department in the letter that there, there was a road that needed to be repaired anyway. So I want to make sure that that's repaired too, as well as the stuff that's damaged by Rose. Mr. Turner, are you happy with that conversation?
Yeah.
Thank you. Right? And that includes the vegetation? Right? Specific. The tree preservation requirements listed and got, uh, be, uh, handled. No, the last one is redesign of the land bank parking, uh, be handled administratively. Well, I, I think that we need to solve the, at least know where we're going now. Uh, if they're going to be acceptable to, uh, moving and redesigning what's going to be happen later, that's fine. And if they're going to move the trees, that's fine, but we ought to know now. I think you ought to have, have plans in your office before approval of, of what the final thing is going to look like.
I think, I think, Mark, I think that's referring to also that the ten foot island that has to go in now, that would be handled administratively before council.
Right. All of that.
Correct. Correct. That would be handled administratively. Yes.
Right.
Hey, okay, miss, Mr.
There is one thing that you did. My very first comment was that the landbag parking be approved. I guess that that goes with the last one too, so. Mr. Turner?
Is everybody in agreement? Uh, Bob, you in agreement with the, uh, de- uh, details?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very comprehensive.
Uh, Dale, I have a question.
Yes, yes, sir.
So.
Mr. Schwartz.
If they damaged the road due to construction, they should repair it. But why should they repair a road that this? That the, is, is, that they're not going to damage that because the city hasn't repaired it, its own road, its own access drive?
It was on, uh, the engineering list, uh, at some point. I, I did not get a new engineering list and, and I, that's why I included it.
I, you know, I, I, I think this is a policy issue that, um, I don't know, I know other cities do this and I don't see why this is somewhat unique because it's, they're, they're going through a city, um, drive, uh, to get to their property. But, uh, it seems to me that's, it's just, it's not fair. That, that ought to be a city burden if, if they're not the ones damaged. If, if the road's already in poor repair and they wouldn't have damaged it, why should?
If I may, this is a PUD and we get to make some special requests on, on these things too. And I think that that's a fair request.
All right. So I, I will, um, be voting against it. I support the project, but I don't, I don't think.
Well, well, let, let's, let's look at this. I think, I think, uh, Duke, you made the point, if there's any damage to city infrastructure, they would be responsible for the, for the cost to repair the damage. And I think that you'd probably get unanimous agreement, uh, unanimous, unanimous agreement on that. I think, uh, our discussion on the other point, yeah, you know, additional bonuses in the PUD process. Certainly we're, we're on record talking about it. Um, it, it, it does raise, as Steve mentioned, is kind of a policy issue. While we can ask for it, is that something we want to ask for? Uh.
Engineering did.
Yeah, and engineering, engineering can make the argument in, uh, to the city council when, uh, when they look at the PUD agreement. So I, I think you guys are making, both making valid points. I think, uh, you know, I think there, there probably is a policy question about that. I mean, if there are a relation to what, you know, us asking for it, even though we can, yeah, as it relates to what? So, um, so I, I mean, I hear what Mr. Schwartz is saying on that point. I think I'd be open to probably, you know, they damaged something, they got to pay for the repair. That's probably a solid position to be into. If there's some other discussions they want to have with the council on further refinement of the PUD agreement that brings in some other issues and they relate, you know, maybe they should make that call. Just some, just food for thought.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, Chris.
So generally speaking, I think past planning commission, um, preference, I don't know if it's a stated preference. I don't think it actually is stated. But I think on a project of this scale and importance to this part of the, the city, I think it shows better for the planning commission to have perhaps not unanimous, but a very strong backing for the city council to consider. Um, I am currently in the Mr. Schwartz court that I think that the language could be just written such that it, it encourages repair. But I don't, I don't know that we need to require at this point, if the city council wants to, to impose that, then that so be it. But I think I would rather have a perhaps closer to unanimous vote for this than, um, a mixed vote that may or may not even pass based on this road issue. So I would encourage the maker of the motion to, uh, reconsider that particular language.
Thank you, Mr. McCray, for your thoughtful comments. So, yeah. I, I mean, I would agree. I mean, it looks like a very positive, uh, development for our community. I know we're all getting older and these types of facilities are, will be certainly in demand. Um, Edward Rose company has good, uh, track record. They're something that, uh, would be, be an asset in the community. And I would agree. I think in general, I think, I, I, you know, I'm not reading the, I, I, you know, I can't read minds, but since my sense is that, that people want to support us. So, yeah, the, the policy issue, which we got of the PUD and what we can ask for or whatever, you know, maybe that's something for another night, have a discussion on that. Um, so, uh, Duke, I don't know if you're, uh, flexible.
Or Bob? I'm, I'm hearing three no's and I, I don't want to say it all again. So is there a fourth no author? Can we put it to a vote?
So I, I have an amendment, Dale, so let's find out.
Okay, let's find out. Go ahead.
I move that we amend the motion to require the developer to repair any part of the access drive that their equipment damages, but not require the developer to, um, repair any part of the access damage that already needs repair or that they did, that the engineering department determines they did not damage.
Okay. Is there support for the amendment?
I'll, I'll second that, but I want to amend his amendment.
Okay, Duke, go ahead.
I, I, I think that we ought to limit our discussion. If, if that's the way, let engineering handle their own and say that they, they need to repair the damage to the road caused by their construction. And end it there.
That's fine.
If you're going to vote on it, vote on it that way. And I've still been voting against it, but I thought I ought to second it just so I could change it a little better.
Okay. I'll test his amendment. Cheryl, if that makes sense.
Cheryl, do you have the amendment to the amendment?
Well, um, so all you're addressing is that they should require, they're going to repair any part that they damage. And you're not, you're silent on the rest is what I just heard.
Yes.
No, okay. Then I don't accept, let, let's, let's see if somebody supports my amendment. I don't accept that amendment. Let's see if somebody seconds my amendment.
Well, didn't Duke, didn't you, you did second it, didn't you, Duke?
I did, but yet, if he's not going to amend it, he need another second.
Oh, so Steve, you don't accept his Duke's amendment to your.
Right. So either, either someone else se- seconds it or my motion fails for lack of a second.
Basically, does, does, uh, Mr. Schwartz have a second to his motion that basically they damaged something?
I will second the mo-
Okay. Okay. So we got, uh, we got, uh, motion and a second on amendment. So we'll do a roll call vote on basically, and be, basically that if they damage it, they fix it, they pay for it, but we're not asking them to do other stuff. Right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so, Cheryl, you gonna do a roll call on that?
I will.
Okay.
So this, this is a, this is a recommend, part of the recommendation to city council, correct?
This is one part of the whole recommendation Duke made. It's an amendment to that recommendation, through the chair.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start, uh, with Commissioner McCray?
Uh, no.
What was it? Pardon me, restate.
I know, my vote is no. I can explain if I need to.
Probably.
I think I need, I would prefer that the motion include the recommendation that city council enters into, some sort of, uh, easement agreement, because if this building were on, its own access to Eleven Mile, they would be responsible for their own accessways and taking care of their own roads. This is a unique situation, but I think they need to be, in some sense, partially responsible for this road going forward, not necessarily what has happened in the past, but going forward.
Good. Well, I, this is Barry Rickner, uh, I think they have to have an easement anyway. They can't get back there without an easement and.
Easement is one thing, but I, an agreement on who pays for the road for future maintenance is the, is what I'm asking for.
So Dale, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yeah, Tom, thank, go ahead.
I think you should just accept, uh, Mr. McCray's vote and, and do the rest, since you're in the middle of a roll call, and then we can have the conversation later.
Thank you. Okay, Cheryl, continue.
Commissioner Orr?
No.
Um, Schwartz?
Hi.
Trefalet?
Hi.
Turner?
Hi.
Rickner?
Yes.
Uh, Vice, Vice Chair Conigan?
Yes.
So I have that as being five to two. It, the, so the amendment passes five to two.
Right, so, so now my motion is amended to, uh, to reflect, uh, what we just voted on.
Correct.
Good, so, uh, so back to the main motion. We have a motion, staffs clarified it, we have a second. Are we ready for roll call? Okay, hearing nothing, let's have a roll call.
One second here.
Okay. You got the hardest job in the room, Cheryl. Thank you.
No doubt.
Okay, so, for the main motion, we'll start with Ms., uh, Commissioner Trefalet.
Hi.
Turner?
Hi.
Rickner?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Orr?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Conigan?
Yes.
So that's unanimous.
Congratulations, Chris.
Very good. Thank you for coming tonight. Good luck with the, uh, city council.
Good.
They, uh, interested in how things turn out. Cheryl, I think, uh, we opened the hearing, I, I don't know if the minutes reflected, I clo- I think I clo- did close the hearing.
You did.
Okay, we brought back the planning commission for action. Okay, very good. Uh, now we're on to, uh, the regular meeting. So, item five A and five B, as you can tell by, you know, the addresses, whatever, they, they, they relate, uh, in terms of the owners and the proponents, uh, but separate actions are required. I think, uh, I'll introduce five A and then maybe staff, maybe give us a little, this, uh, point out maybe the relationship of the two, and then we can ask the proponent to come, or the applicant come forward and, and discuss the resoning request. So, uh, five A is resoning request two dash seven of twenty twenty, location thirty-three, four sixty-six, Eight Mile Road. Proposal rezone a parcel currently zoned O S two, planned office district, B three, general business district. The action requested is to set for public hearing. Set us, set up by the planning commission. The applicant is Hans Kuhlman, and the owner is Michael Danes Sever. Uh, staff, uh, Mark, do you wanna take a stab at, uh, kind of an intro, uh, the relationship between the two requests? Okay, uh, thank you, Mark. Uh, at this point, I'd like the applicant come forward and, um, present the re- zoning request.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Hans Kuhlman. My address is thirty-four oh five East Ethan Avenue in Denver, Colorado, eight zero two one zero. I have owned the vacant lot for fifteen years, and I've had probably, oh, I don't know, half a dozen to a dozen conversations with Mark over the years about, possibility or potential of developing that parcel. Uh, the background of the property is fifteen years ago, we came before you, uh, when we bought the parcel to develop a bank branch on that property. The bank never built, they did have a lease for a period of time, they were marketing the property since they controlled it, for the entire fifteen year period that they owned it, or they, they leased it. Uh, their lease expired two years ago. I've been marketing it since then. And our zoning request really is, uh, based on the, the use of the property and surrounding properties, and giving us a little more flexibility on the development of the property, without, I don't believe negatively affecting any other adjacent properties or surrounding property. Mr. Davenshire, who owns a vacant parcel, he and I have spoke a number of times, and when I, introduced myself to him and asked him if he had any interest, uh, and I believe he also occupies his building as well, um. If he had any interest in rezoning his property to make a contiguous zoning of the, uh, of, of the B three, he said, yes, that would be great. So, uh, the two applications were filed by me, he signed his application. And I supplied Mark when I sent my application in, kinda with an overview aerial that showed all the various zonings, uh, not only in your city, but also in Livonia. And the property along Eight Mile Road to the south of you is all zone their version of B three or C two. And obviously, to the east of us, uh, is zoned B three in your community. Both Farmington Road and Eight Mile Road are major thoroughfares. Um, and so it just seems that the line that you currently have dividing O S two, and the B three zoning is a little arbitrary, I would think, from my perspective. Similar to what you have as you go up and down Farmington, as you'll notice that the northwest corner is zoned B three, then you have a, one parcel that's zoned O S one, and then you have more B three. And as you continue on this zoning map, and actually, I'm not sure if it really reflects it accurately, because I believe you have O S two, and then when you get to the corner of, is that Cotty or, as you continue west to Call Road, the actual, uh, the actual northwest corner of Call Road is B three. So I'm requesting that the planning commission and the city council of Farmington Hills, take a look at my request from a comprehensive use of what these parcels, uh, actually, I think flow with the surrounding zoning.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kuhlman, thank you. Uh, before we go to the consultant, uh, commissioners, do you have questions for the, for the applicant?
Uh, yes, I do.
Mr. Orr?
Not, not for the applicant, I'm sorry, for the administration, I'm sorry.
Well, you wanna ask it now, or you wanna wait?
Uh, actually, if it's for you, Mark. Uh, the, did we not, uh, recently, the red, uh, B three further north, that's Steincoff Nursery? Am I right about that?
Yes.
And, and the, the little corner that's missing, didn't we just rezone that residential from business a while ago? I'm just trying to remember. The interior corner, the, the residential lot just north of the blue spot, did, wasn't that originally B three and somebody wanted that rezoned a long time, uh, maybe a couple of years ago? Okay, I'm just, just trying to remember areas. Thank you very much.
Uh, any more questions from the commissioners?
I have a question.
Mr. Bricker?
The, the one, the one building that's existing, I think is a doctor's office, they're not, nothing's gonna change there, they're just changing the zoning for a, a building that exists already. I obviously know why, it's so that you don't have a spot zone, but is anything gonna be done to the building? Are we talk, we're talking about the, the one that has the building on it right now. Is anything gonna change except the zoning?
Uh, again, this is Hans Kuhlman. I don't believe anything is going to change. Uh, Mr. Danjvar may be on this call with us, and I don't know if he was sent a separate invite to be able to speak. But I don't think he has any plans to change his building whatsoever at this current time.
The only difference between the B three and the O S, that that particular building is the setback from Eight Mile Road. And it does fit with, you can see how far back it's pushed compared to the bank next door that is in the B three. And I assume, well, I won't worry about your piece until we get to it, but, uh, I just wanted to know, is something else going in there, or just, or just playing musical letters on a piece of property?
Yep, there currently are no development plans that are, on, really on either parcel at the current time.
Uh, is Mr. Danjvar, uh, on the line now? Does, is he, uh, uh, willing to shed a little more light on that? Okay, hearing nothing. So let's, uh, thank you very much, uh, let's, uh, hear from, uh, Giffords Webster. Rod, you doing this one?
I will, uh, this is Joe, uh, Joe Janey from Giffords Webster. Thank you. Uh, yes, so if you're looking at the letters, um, the one that says two dash seven dash twenty twenty is the, is the one we're on right now. Um. So, this is the developed parcel of the two. Uh, it is, uh, just under an acre, and, uh, it is zoned O S two. It's developed with a small medical office building. Um, the surrounding properties, so to the north, we have an R A three district, there's single family homes there, that's actually going to become important later in the letter. Uh, to the east, we have B three, uh, which is a bank. Uh, to the south in Livonia across Eight Mile, we have C two, and that's developed with commercial properties, uh, there's a kind of a strip mall there. Uh, and to the west is the vacant parcel that is also in front of you tonight, which is also zoned O S two. Um, about the only thing on that parcel is you can see the driveway that, from the house that used to be there. Um, so on the master plan, this land is designated small office on the future land use map. Um, so when we look at the, uh, proposed zoning versus the current zoning, there's a few things. One, we have a table in here showing you the different standards, uh, that would apply. Um, but they're proposing to rezone the property in question to B three with, there's no proposed uses, as the, uh, applicant just testified. So the B three district is intended to accommodate intensive commercial uses, the, uh, O S two district is intended to accommodate small office uses. And within the O S two district, uh, in those instances where the planning commission finds that an excessive number of ingress and egress points may occur with relation to major or secondary thoroughfares, the planning commission may require a marginal access drive to the next site with the district. Um, so you could, when you look at that stretch of Eight Mile, you can see that those marginal access drives are very much there on all of the O S two properties, uh, including this one. This one is stubbed to the west, though not to the east. Um. So the, the parcel to the east is own B three, it doesn't have a stub to, to this parcel either, so, um, it, there's never gonna, probably not gonna be a connection to the east, but, uh, a connection to the west is very much there. Um, now in the B three district, uh, the planning commission also has the option to require a, a marginal access drive. So the completion of the access drive could be, um, mandated as part of site plan review. Uh, the one thing to consider is that in the B three district, that needs to be set back ten feet, whereas in the O S two district, it can be right on the property line. And, um, the, there would be an alignment issue, so that you might have a situation where the, the, uh, vacant parcel were to, uh, put in that marginal access drive would probably be a variance to, uh, to line up with what's already there. So this site has a driveway directly onto Eight Mile, uh, as well. Um, you can see the standards are, you know, fairly similar, except for that front setback in the O S two, it's a hundred and twenty feet. In the B three district, it's twenty-five feet. If the marginal access drive is built, it's functionally somewhat more like thirty-two feet, because of the, uh, uh, the drive itself and the required setback. Uh, B three also has a taller height limit, and requires more front yard open space. So anytime we look at a rezoning, uh, we always consider the, a set of questions that guides us to a decision. So the first question is, is the proposed zoning consistent with the master plan? In this case, the master plan designates the site as small office on the future land use map, that's consistent with the current zoning. Uh, what other impact would the requested zoning have on public services, utilities, and natural features? In general, we'd expect commercial uses to have a somewhat higher demand on infrastructure and services and small offices. Obviously, we're dealing with small sites, both slightly under an acre here. Uh, has the applicant provided evidence that the property cannot be developed or used as zone? Uh, in this case, they haven't. Property is currently developed with a small multi-tenant office building, uh, that's hosted both medical and professional offices. Uh, medical and professional offices are permitted uses in both the current and the requested district. Uh, fourth question is, is the proposed zoning district and potential land uses compatible with surrounding uses? In general, the small office oriented districts, O S one, O S two, are considered to be transitional buffer uses to single family districts. Uh, B three district is oriented toward heavier commercial uses. Um, in the B three district, drive-through uses are, are listed, however, they're prohibited in B three on properties that are but in R A district. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, you have R A three zoning to the north, so the drive-through uses, they're usually available in the B three district, would not be available on either of these properties. Uh, the planning commission, uh, might wanna consider the potential traffic impact of retail traffic on an office marginal access drive if the rezoning were approved. Uh, you do have a couple of, uh, parcels to the west that are accessed only via the marginal access drive. And even if you were to put in, uh, a driveway on this prop, on the, uh, undeveloped property here, uh, you would still have that access drive providing access to those other two parcels. Uh, will the proposed zoning place its burden on nearby thoroughfares? And if so, how would this burden compare with the existing zoning district? So, uh, while commercial uses are generally, are associated with higher traffic volumes and office uses, uh, Eight Mile is a regional roadway, it's likely able to absorb any difference in traffic, uh, on a site of this size. Uh, is there other land currently available for this use? Uh, there's certainly, uh, undeveloped land zone B three in the city. Uh, not much of it is located in this, uh, immediate vicinity, uh, but there is some around the city. Um, will the development of the site under proposed zoning be able to meet zoning district requirements? So, I, we don't have a plan or our prospective use, uh, in front of us. But it does seem possible for appropriately scaled development on the site, uh, to meet the requirements of the ordinance. Um. You know, due to the fact that the property of us are a zoning, you're not going to have a drive-through. You know, due to the fact that the property of us are a zoning, you're not going to have a drive-through use, which would probably be the most space consuming type of use available with a couple possible exceptions. Next question, number eight, is rezoning the best way to address the request? Or could the existing zoning district be mended to add the proposed use as a permitted or special land use? We don't have a use in front of us, so that question really, you know, can't be answered. It's developed right now with the use that's permitted in the current zone. Has there been a change in circumstances and conditions since the adoption of the master plan that would support the proposed change? The area has not changed a lot since the last master plan was adopted. It's pretty similar. And then we have finally our three questions that relate to whether or not the rezoning would result in an unplanned spot zone. Spot zoning is, we use this test for that that comes from Rogers, the Village of Harrytown. So one is, is the rezoning request consistent with the master plan? In this case, it's designated for small office, consistent with current zoning. It's a proposed zoning district, a logical extension of an existing zoning district in the area. The parcel would be adjacent to neighboring B three zoning. The parcel directly to the west is also requesting the same rezoning to B three concurrent with this request. Across Eight Mile, you do have commercial zoning in the city of Livonia. And would approving the request grant a special benefit to a property owner or developer? In general, this, this rezoning as requested would expand the range of uses available on the property. We don't appear to have any kind of imminent plan for redevelopment if the rezoning is granted, but you would have more uses available on the property if it were. Are there any questions?
Yes, or?
Okay.
I do.
The number seven on your list says, will the development of the site under proposed be able to meet the zoning district requirements? Is not 50% front yard open space a requirement of that district?
It is a requirement of that district, yes.
And looking at this particular property is front yard open space defined as from the front of the building to the street or to property line?
It would be defined based on the required setback and the required setback would be twenty five.
Twenty five feet.
Yeah.
And so, and so if you look at the first 25 feet of this property, there's no way that 20, 50% of that is open. The, the driveways 22 feet wide.
Yeah, well, you'd be looking at two non-conformities in this case. You have, you have the, the front yard open space and you have the setback for the, the marginal access drive, which in B three is supposed to be set back 10 feet. It's, it's on the property line clearly.
At the moment, it's not a marginal access drive. It's, it's just a piece of concrete, but in, in the future it will be. And yes, at that point it becomes non-conforming, but in the meantime, we have this other non-conformity. And I'm curious, why, why would we change the zoning on a lot to make it non-conforming?
Typically, you would not do that.
Thank you.
Dale? Dale?
Yes.
This is Steve. So when this comes back, these two parcels come back and I, I don't have an opinion on this yet. But I don't think we should be looking at this request as just these two parcels. I, we're going to have to do that, but I think we have to put it in a context of where do we see? Where, where do we want Eight Mile to go? So I'd like to see if the master plan has a specific page about this. Or discussion of what the master plan had. I'd like to see the zoning on Eight Mile from Farmington down to the ice rink and Farmington over to Orchard Lake. And if we can get a map showing what's there now. I, I think we have to put this in the context of what, where do we want development in Eight Mile to go? You know, in a post-COVID world, there's going to be likely a reduced demand for office. We were already seeing and even more so reduced demand for retail that isn't, you know, no one's going to build a retail to put up a, a small boutique clothing store. You know, the most retail that we see developed is, is food oriented, or I could see on Eight Mile, auto repair oriented and, you know, so if Giffords Webster can kind of, it's impossible division this, but I think we're going to have to do that. Cause if these two parcels get rezoned, where then do you draw a line and say the rest shouldn't, should not be office, should be, you know? And, and again, I haven't formed an opinion, but I think that's really where the discussion needs to go. I, I understand Mr. Coleman's problem. But I think we have to put this in a larger context because if, if this winds up getting rezoned, are we okay with continuing to rezonate to the west down Eight Mile? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, I, I agree. I think we need to look at a larger context and for all the reasons you stated. So yes, I hope once we set it for public hearing, not only how the two parcels relate to one another, but how it kind of relates to what's going on right now and, and our master plan for Eight Mile Road. I agree. Any other questions, comments?
Well, my comment is, this is Barry. My comment is, this is, I don't think that this particular lot, they're going to do anything with it whatsoever except change it to B three so you don't have spot zoning. It's just a way to get around spot zoning so you can get the B three on the other one. And the, the uses are a little bit, you can get more uses out of a B three than you can out of the OS two. But the only difference between the two that I can see just brings the building closer to Eight Mile Road because it's allowed in the B three where it's not allowed in the OS two. So to me, it's just a way to juggle the building within their own lot and make it a B three so they can, you can change the, the frontage. But I don't see the lot that we're looking at right now as anything happening to it other than changing it from a OS, OS two to a, to a B three. And I doubt that the, the, a doctor's office is going to get teared down and, and move forward to get it closer to Eight Mile. So you're going to have them going up and down and up and down, which you have between the bank and, and the doctor's office now. And I just, to me, it's just a, a way to make that lot a B three. And the only way to make it a B three is to make the, the lot next door to a B three, whether they make a change to it or not. There was one other comment that was made about what was going up along Farmington Road. And I, I, I'll ask Mark this. I assume that Steinkopf's been there before zoning was. But I assume they existed prior to Farmington Hills being a city.
Oh, yes.
So that, that, you, you have something that's been grandfathered in and you can't use that as a reason to say, oh, we got spot zoning over there. It's just been there for a heck of a long time. But I don't see, see, I mean, to me, it's, to me, this is just a, a way to get that lot B three. And the only way to do it is by making an existing lot a B, a B three because you, it'll be spot zoning if we, if we don't approve that. And I don't think that the owner of the building that's there now cares one way or the other because I, I doubt he's planning on changing anything. It's just going to be there with a different designation. Oh, by the way, on the, on the Giffords report, you kept referring to it as OS one instead of OS two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Chris, go ahead. Thank you.
So I feel that we have the information in front of us. There's the request to set these for public hearing. So therefore I move that rezoning request two dash seven dash twenty twenty be set for public hearing for September seventeenth, I believe.
Support.
And with that, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Chris, you made, Chris made a motion. Who supported?
Steve.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Comment.
Yeah, the comment is, the request is to set for public hearing. We're going to go through a public hearing. And it is not an obligation to make a change. It's simply an obligation to have a public hearing and then we can evaluate at that time.
Agreed. I mean, I like the, the discussion of the planning commission in terms of its, you know, the relationship of the two. Everybody makes, makes good points and kind of like the, the context of the properties. And then maybe Gifford Webster's can kind of look at it and we can have further insight in terms of its relationship with everything around it and what we see in the future. Certainly points about, you know, kind of forcing our hands in a vacant piece. There's merit there, but you know, we all have open minds about, you know, what we need to examine before we make a decision. Uh, any more discussion? If not, share a roll call.
Commissioner Turner?
Bob?
Commissioner Turner?
Unmuted.
I'll, I'll skip him and come back. Commissioner Britner?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Or?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trufful?
Yes.
He's still muted? Commissioner Turner, if you could unmute yourself? Okay.
Yes.
So is, do we have, do we have?
Yeah, so do, oh, yes or no for setting this for a public hearing?
Yes, for public hearing.
Yes. And Vice Chair Conigan?
Yes, please.
So it's six to one.
Okay, thank you. Next item is five B zoning request three, seven, twenty twenty. Location three, three, four, seven, four, Eight Mile Road. Proposal rezoned parcel currently zoned OS two, planned office district to B three. General Business District action requested set for public hearing of the planning commission. Hans Coleman, the applicant owner, HK Holdings LLC. Applicant. Please present.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is Hans Coleman once again. Thanks again for letting me join your meeting this evening. You know, no changes or no different comments, other than I, I do appreciate the gentleman asked to take a long-term look at how Eight Mile Road is going to be developed in the future. And with COVID amongst us all, what that development plan looks like. And I would like to go back to that zoning map that shows the zoning of the surrounding parcels. And I, and I just want to clarify, the map I have shows a little bit different in that, or maybe that's the wrong road. But I know as you go farther west, there is another corner that is zone B three. And then you've got some OS one mixed in with, I think, a little piece that has RA three actually that goes out to Eight Mile Road, which I think is shown on this plan on the far left. To the left of that, RA three zone property is another OS one property and then another B three property. And I guess I would ask the, the folk, I was not obviously around when your master plan was performed, but I, I'm trying to understand why the B three line was drawn where it was along Eight Mile Road, given that Eight Mile Road is such a heavily traveled corridor. And I would ask that if you also are trying to prohibit or prevent interference from development that has less impact on residential, obviously, the farther you move your building away from the residential up towards Eight Mile, the farther way, the less the impact that the residential behind you is going to have.
Okay, Mr. Coleman, thank you very much. Joe?
Thank you. Given that we are, are just setting the hearing this evening and the letters are quite similar, I won't belabor everything in the letter that I, I kind of just read it all. So, you know, I'll just note that, you know, the, the difference with this parcel was that it is not developed currently. And, you know, we would expect that when it is developed, that, you know, that the surroundings would be taken into account. So hence the, the focus on the marginal access drive in the letter. And, you know, when we look at the spot zoning question, you know, obviously this parcel itself does not abut a B three zoning. You know, you, you do have commercial across Eight Mile, but you've got an intervening OS two parcel to the east. So it's a somewhat different arrangement than the other parcel that we're looking at. And of course, that's the reason for the, the two parcels being requested for rezoning at the same time. You know, otherwise the letters are quite similar. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joe, for your brevity.
And Chairman?
Questions? Any questions?
May I add one, Mr. Hans Coleman, I had one more comment?
Uh, sure.
Well, my comment is this, when, when, when the commission makes a decision on recommendation or not for this particular rezoning of these two parcels, I guess I would ask the commission to consider if the rezoning was granted, what could be developed on either of these parcels that would negatively impact the community and any surrounding property? And does it have any negative impact on any of the adjacent properties or from your master plan in general? So I think I mentioned you was still, to me, I'm not sure how that area was picked just one door down from, from my property to be B three, where everything is then going west to go OS two. So it asks that the uses basically are expanded to allow the development of my parcel and my neighbor's, Devonshire's property to be developed in the future, which I think gives us more options to develop property that would benefit the community. And I don't see any negative impact in that, but obviously that's for all of you to decide on how it, how it impacts your community.
Okay, well, thank you for the question. And I think as we go through the process, hopefully we'll be able to illuminate that issue and give you a sense of where the community is and why they've made decisions where they make decisions.
They don't have a motion?
Uh, motion?
No, no.
Through, through the chair, the no, no.
And there was Duke. I, I would like to have a little more discussion, please.
Uh, Duke, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all yours.
The, if, if marginal access drive again becomes a problem. Again, if we're going to rezone this lot and the, the requirement is a marginal access drive and you're going to put a requirement on there that 50% of the front yard setback has to be open space, that's just not possible to have both. So why are we rezoning a lot that's going to be impossible to comply with the zoning? That, that, that puts a burden on our border zoning appeals. It's not, not fair to them to rezone a lot and then make them give a variance for something that was, was fine before we changed the zoning.
Thank you. Nothing to be rezoned. We're just receiving a request for a hearing so we can have a greater discussion on the issue relating to the request and then we'll come to a determination. So, and, you know, so.
All I'm saying is you're, you're making a non-conforming lot out of something that's conforming now.
We're setting a public hearing.
But there is going to be an excess road required, is there not?
We're setting a public hearing. That's all we're doing right now. We'll talk about it when we're ready for that.
Yeah, I mean, Duke, you're on the record, your concerns about, about if it was rezoned. But at this point, yeah, we're just going to set up public hearing, get more information and we'll be able to make a well-informed decision based on and, and input from our public.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the rezoning request three dash seven dash twenty twenty to resume on the property located at three, three, four, seven, four, Eight Mile Road from OS two, planned office district into B three, general business district petition. from OS two, planned office district into B three, general business district petitioned by Hans Kuhlman be set for public hearing on September seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Truffulet?
Truffulet, second, moved by Britner, supported by Truffulet. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Aye.
Truffulet?
Yai.
Turner?
Aye.
Britner?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Orr?
No.
And Vice Chair Conigan?
Yes.
So again, it is six to one.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Uh, we'll see you down the road.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, uh, next item is approval of the minutes of July sixteen, twenty twenty. Everybody should have received it in their packet. For a motion to approve the minutes.
Little discussion, please?
Uh, yes, discussion, Mr. Orr.
Uh, maybe Mark wants to giant, yeah, chime in, chime in. Uh, I I had a little problem with uh when we made the motion about the trees at the uh um Ruby Tuesdays, for lack of a better word. I I believe I said two at one point, and somebody questioned said, well, there was three, and I said, I think two is fine. And I I think that's the way we left it. I might be wrong, but uh Mark, you were gonna research that.
That's my memory.
Two?
Yes.
Thank you. So I moved that we changed that in the minutes to two?
Uh, uh, Duke, what page are we on?
I read that two days ago. You're asking me now?
I apologize.
Hang on. Uh.
I know what we're specifically changing in the minutes.
It's uh bottom of page four.
Bottom page four.
Number eight. And I think there should be two additional parking lot trees to be added to the plant.
So, uh, do we have, so Mark, uh to staff, do we we have an audio tape or whatever, or what do you look at?
I do, and I remember that discussion also. I I I believe that that is correct. That is what Duke said was two.
Okay.
Oh, um, but I'll go back and listen to that, and if it's, but I I believe that what Duke is saying is correct.
I think the general recollection is two. That's mine as well. Uh, so, uh, I don't have a problem with it.
We'll make that change.
Okay.
Other than that, I move to approve.
Okay, a move by Duke to the minute. It says amended. You got a second? Thank you, John. Uh, roll call, Cheryl?
Okay, Orr and Truffulet. Um, I have to tell you, there's something else that has to be corrected in those minutes. And every motion, for whatever reason, I had decided there was only seven commissioners, so I'll go through and correct that. And it'll be nine to zero, not seven to zero, so.
Thank you.
So let you know that.
We can't, I guess we can't count.
Paste all the way through. All right, so Commissioner Britner?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Orr?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Truffulet?
Yes.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Conigan?
Yes, thanks for testing us on that one, Cheryl.
Sure.
Okay, uh, are there uh folks out there, public comment? Would like to comment on something that's not on the, that wasn't on the agenda tonight? Like to share with the planning commission of the Farmington Hills?
Chair Conigan, I don't see any public questions or comments.
Okay, so you know, uh, questions or comments from the public, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Uh, Mr. Britner?
Yes, uh, we had a vote in the spring about the that cement, little cement plant there on Drake Road, and I was concerned about giving him like carte blanche. Well, at the beginning, they started making cement. Uh, it's in a few weeks. It's just been sitting there idle with piles of dirt and what?
They they poured cement today.
Oh, they were making it today? Oh, they were, they haven't seen them do anything in the last two months. One other comment I'd like to make is this, and it's something for Mr. Schwartz to look into. Has there been some strange court decisions coming down considering tree funds?
Mr. Schwartz, you have any information on that?
No, not Schwartz, Mr. Schultz.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Is he still around?
Tom, are you there? We got the Berry's question on tree fund?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes, there is uh, there has been a couple of cases out of Canton Township.
There was a federal case and a state case, I think.
Yeah. I don't.
But would it be something we we like the planning commission should get some information on?
It it may be. I mean, at this point, there are two uh trial court decisions uh which are going up on appeal.
Okay.
They involve the uh application of Canton Township's tree protection ordinance and determination by uh property owners to remove trees without permits that Canton Township then uh addressed with um you know, uh ordinance enforcement. So, um it's a different kind of ordinance than than the one you have, but you know, yeah, sure. Uh, they they are gonna be very relevant. Uh, more relevant when we get some appellate determination on them, but probably relevant to talk about when when we can at a study session when we do them. So, yeah.
Okay, well, I I just, I had just heard.
That'll be of interest, yes.
I I've I've been reading a little bit about it, and and no one else seemed to know much about what was going on, but it it wa- it didn't sound good. That's why I brought it up.
But yeah, it's it's not good. They are, both decisions are being appealed. They, I I I will tell you that the the one that came out first from the federal court, uh and and by the way, uh, a sort of disclosure here, we are defending town uh township. Um, but they're more about takings than uh uh anything else, and not so much about free fund as the uh the whole concept of frankly having a pre-replacement ordinance. So, uh, much more to come on those. They'll get more relevant as they move up the chain, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, thank you, Barry. Uh, Chris?
I'd like to uh go last if I could.
Certainly. Uh, okay, uh, Duke?
Nothing tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Steve?
Well, I'm happy for Mr. Truffulet, cause his street got torn up down to the dirt in my recollection, April, early May.
A four.
Uh, I think asphalt put down a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure it's totally done. It's close to done, but contractor did, once he tore the concrete uh or the uh the road up, he left it that way for about three months, so.
Well, yeah, I was out there every day, and uh it was spring line out of Farmington Hills, and most of the residents are fairly happy with the way, how quickly it went. It was done in a little over three months. So, based on what had happened on Thirteen Mile north of us, uh, we were quite happy, actually, so.
You're more patient than I am. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I have.
Well, no, we were allowed, yes, unlike the people on Thirteen Mile.
Yeah, I just wondered if they had the uh the the tax dollars, your tax dollars at work signed up.
No, they didn't, as a matter of fact.
Okay, okay.
They had they had outhouses on each end of the street, but they didn't have that.
Yeah. Got anything from you?
Uh, no. I'm uh waiting for Steve to uh walk down our totally finished street.
Okay. Uh, Bob?
No.
Nothing going? Okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, uh, I look, uh, we'll go to Chris last. I look forward to uh seeing you guys all in person soon, hopefully, where we can do this business in person.
Yes.
Chris?
And so hopefully that in-person business will be September, but I'm doubtful. Um, the reason I hope it's September is because I told Mark and Ed that that will be my last meeting. Um, we have chosen to move to downtown Northville, so.
Chris, you're leaving us.
I know. So it's only been a couple of minutes, but uh.
What are you gonna do with your beautiful garden?
Well, Maureen's bringing half of it with her. But uh, no, it's just we're time for something new, and here we go, so. Um, I will be on the next meeting, assuming it still stays the seventeenth, but uh beyond that, you'll have a, you'll have to get somebody new up here, so. I don't see a person soon, and if not, then I'll have to uh come by a meeting when you guys do get back into the chambers, just to say hello to everybody, but um, I'll, you know, probably more pithy comments in September, but I just wanna give everybody a heads up, and if they have friends looking to spend a lot of time on Zoom meetings, here you go.
Chris, uh, congratulations, and uh, you know, and uh, yeah, we wanna hear more pithy remarks at the next meeting. Look forward, hopefully, we will see you at that meeting. But uh, you've certainly been around for a while, making contributions, significant contributions to the city of Farmington Hills in your various roles. So we thank you and wish you and Maureen bu- all the best.
I appreciate your kind words. Thank you.
I wanna thank you for shedding a lot of light on it.
Okay.
Thanks, dude.
Very good, Duke. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I think we're uh, we're a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved, so moved.
Okay, Duke. Seconded by.
Barry.
Barry. Roll call? Cheryl?
I'm here. Commissioner Britner?
Yes.
Nanty, oh, not here. Um, McCray?
Yes.
Orr?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Truffulet?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Conigan?
Yes, thank you very much. Everybody have a good evening.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.